All right, welcome everybody and the only thing we have is the agenda. So is there anything on the consent agenda? Anything on the public hearings?
I just have one question regarding the budget on item four A. And I realize that it may not be reflected in the current budget, but I am rather interested in what the plan is going forward. And that pertains to the $2 million down payment for the parking garage at Rivers Edge Park. I'm kind of curious as to where we expect those funds to be drawn from.
You remember where Dan? No, I don't think that-
Can't be part of a bond.
Yeah, they weren't part of the bond, I don't think. They took them out of the bond and used some cash reserves that-
They were part of this trading of projects.
Right.
So it's out of cash that we already had that we're going to use on other projects. So they're already allocated in the CIP.
I think-
I, okay, so it's, we're reducing the projects that are already in the CIP? We're using cash reserves? I didn't quite follow that.
No, it was back when he talked about taxable versus non-taxable. And he moved some things around because since it is a lease, it would have been a taxable bond, which would have meant that it would have got a higher interest rate. He took some money that we had from other issues and used them. And so that's how he jumped ahead a little bit on the library and some of those projects.
But that was for funding for this current year, not the next year that we're-
Yeah, it's already been-
Yes, it's already been out.
Program.
Okay, when you get a chance, when you can add some clarity to that, if you could map that out and send it to me in an email, I would appreciate that. Because I'm still kind of twisted like a pretzel on that one, so I appreciate it. And that's the only budget question I had.
All right. Any other questions on the public hearing?
On four D, Greg, if you could come up, I just want to, did, Jody, were you able to get the pictures from them? Or Matt, either one, I guess. I had a lady call me today and ask about, obviously, the resolutions about the medians. And she said to me, is phase one not going to be aesthetically pleasing because there are no medians? And I said, well, no, it's going to look really nice, you know, it's going to have a lot of different aesthetics in phase one as well. And when we were talking last time, we, you know, we were trying to come up with some alternatives to the medians that would be aesthetically pleasing, that would, that wouldn't reduce access to businesses. And when I, when I was talking with yourself and Greg, I mean, we kind of have an alternative to phase one or to the medians. It's really phase one, is that correct?
Correct. Since, since segment one does not have medians, we propose the differing median paving, which is what is illustrated on the screen. That's from the actual plans for segment one, which shows a different texture and material for the center turn lane, also a similar pattern. It's rotated 90 degrees in the intersection of 35th Street, the special intersections that we've talked about. So you see the interlocking concrete pavers in the crosswalk area and then the textured concrete in the middle.
Can you show the next one too, Jody? That's a little more up close. Maybe, maybe one more. So that, when they were showing me today, that's a little bit more of what the center turn lane and then some of the, like 35th, I mean, there's nodes of different-
Where the, where the traffic signals are.
Yeah.
In segment one, it's only 35th, but as we continue to the east, there'll be additional intersections.
35th is pavers, isn't it?
The crosswalk areas pavers, what we call the inside of the donut, the hole in the donut, that's-
Be stamped concrete.
Correct. And so what you see in the, kind of that inset there that's colored gray, it shows the tined versus a more of a brushed finish. That's created, what we're proposing, and the contractor's looking at options on how to actually construct that, but it can be a stamp, it could be a rolled-
Right.
...application on the concrete. But it's similar to the red alternating finishes you see on the squares along some of, like 24th Street, South Expressway.
Right. It would have a different look than the rest of the-
Yeah.
-the turn lane the entire way and then obviously the main intersections.
So the different textures in the concrete gives it a shadow and also give it a feel as you drive on it.
It'll feel different than the asphalt.
And then obviously, it's, it's got a gray color versus the black of the asphalt. That's, that's what's in segment one today.
Right, so the two, the travel through lanes, I guess is what I'll call them, the east and westbound lanes will be black, which is asphalt, a full depth asphalt, not an overlay, just so everybody knows.
Right.
And then the center turn lane will, will be a darker gray and, and have that texture to it. So it will be completely different looking than, than the pass-through lanes. And so when I was talking with Greg and Matt today, when, in talking about an alternative to the medians that's aesthetically pleasing, you know, we, we kind of have an alternative with, with what we're doing in phase one.
I guess just to add to that, though, in that whole section, from the time you come off the interstate till you get to 35th, you've got the pillars at the entry, you've got a median there that gets planted every year. So, you know, there's a little bit more than what'll be shown here because it's already in place.
Right. Our improvements basically start at the, the end of that existing median at 36 today, just past the gateway features. So yes, those features will still be there, they'll remain after our project.
There's a good bit that had already been completed prior to starting with this phase, so I just want to kind of point that out, that there'll be some other beautification that's already in down there, including median.
That, I just wanted to point that out, that it will look different. And it, again, it's, phase one will be just as aesthetically pleasing and it does not have a median, is, was my main point of, when, when we talked about it, there, we already have an alternative if we were to take the, the medians out of the corridor plan.
But it does already have a median in that section down there, just to point that out, that-
In phase one?
When we're talking about aesthetically pleasing, you've got a median that runs from your exit off the interstate up to almost what Wash days.
36th.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's because we're not building it now doesn't mean it doesn't exist. There is one already there and there are the pillars coming in. So there's a good bit of additional that had already been done. So it's, if, if you say that it's going to still be aesthetically pleasing, well, you're not going to have those items because those were already in place. I mean, not to just ignore the items that are already there. It's going to look completely different further down Broadway if all you do is the texturing because you won't have that median or those pillars or the things that had already been completed.
Well, right, but that's what I'm saying, and from 35th in front of Wash Days where it really starts, phase one, where they dug today, I was down there, because it started today.
Yeah.
They, they moved some dirt today. In, in front of Wash Days, from 35th, roughly 36th, I guess you would call it, to 33rd, there, there is no median in the plans, is all I'm saying.
Correct, yeah.
So, thanks, Matt.
Okay.
Anything else on the-
Good point of clarification to, Roger came to us, he said, what are the alternatives if, if we don't build a median? And, and I guess what we're suggesting is we have a design for when there are no medians, rather than create a whole new, unique-
Correct.
-idea for the median, just use what we got.
Stick with what's in phase one, absolutely.
Because I had asked Matt earlier to Cox and he said, you know, if we can do like a condensed, kind of like a turn lane type meeting, you know, just something smaller, but he was thinking, and I'm sure you are too, if we go less than what's already there median wise, it's probably better just to do nothing?
Yeah, lengthwise, it just, you know, we've, there's been many discussions on why they are where they are and can we shrink them? And I guess just at some point, you just get to the point where it's, why? Why? But again, you can, you can put them to island 20 feet long if you want to do it. I just don't know if it delivers the impact that the effort provides. I just want to make clear that-
We would like, yeah, we would want to continue with the-
You know, we went through an eight-month design process and rather than create something from scratch-
No, yeah, and I, that's, that was what I was kind of pointing out too, is we would want it to look like phase one, the rest of the other phases, absolutely.
Anything else on-
I'm just curious then, if, if this resolution that you submitted, Roger, were to pass tonight, where you say, and, but adding thereto such aesthetics and enhancements as deemed appropriate by this council, when would this council deem those appropriate? I mean, when would you bring something else to be deemed appropriate? No, I mean, you're, it's an open-ended resolution.
The same argument you made last week can't be the argument that, that we made last week, can't be the argument this week, I guess. We don't have nine more months, that's-
Well, I thought that's what-
Do we, do we, I'm sorry, do we have texts of, of an actual resolution and an attachment? I didn't notice. Because I, I didn't see an actual resolution to-
This is what I've got.
Well, that, that's the, lack of a better word, the enabling that we have with, but I, you know, this is how we put it into place, but I didn't see the actual, normally we have a document with it. Like, like for example, when we did our, our rental inspection, we actually had a document. This, this is kind of what gets published with it, to make it alive, if you will. But I didn't see actual language of, like, the proposal.
That's what the city attorney gave me, as far as the resolution goes.
Are you talking more like a staff report or a-
Well, like, like, like the actual, like the actual text, like when we approve, I'm trying to think of when we've done a res, well, other resolutions, and I, I think I'll go back to paper too, because I could flip right to it, I want, can I, can I-
You can, or I'll label those resolutions right there.
Can I steal your, thank you. Like, the, well, I'm not sure we have one this time, but I'm thinking, I don't have another packet with me. No, not the one, I think, I, normally, at least when, like when we're doing a, a resolution, we'd be able to know, like, the, the terms of, like, I took that as more of a negotiate, an invitation to negotiate, like, what those additional aesthetic things would be. I, I think ultimately we'd have to, if we were going to change it, I think we'd have to have that written down, what they were going to be. And so then we could talk about, does the language fit substantively what we want? So there's two bits to it, it, you know, the parts that we want it to be and then does the language meet that? And that's maybe me geeking out on the, the legal speak, but when, when we look at something, there's not only the issue of what we want, but does the language we choose meet that?
You mean, like, I think we'd have to, I think-
I, I need words here to be able to know.
No, I think I get what you're asking, like, I think we still would have to decide that together, if we decided-
Yeah, I'd need words.
No medians, then yeah, I think then we have to decide what is our alternative. I think it's probably not in here because we first have to decide whether or not-
Fair enough, but we, we'd need to know, yeah, what, what that alternative would be and then on the language, did we agree with what the language said? Because it couldn't, we couldn't just agree tonight and that be the end of it, that we want aesthetic changes? Let's say we want to change the plan and we want different aesthetic changes? We'd have to say what that, like, for example, if we went with your new proposal to, to, to take the segment one and make that apply in the plan, we'd have to have it say that so that we could all do our due diligence to look at that draft and make certain that, number one, did we agree with it in concept, like in substance? But number two, did we agree that the language procedurally that was written accomplished it? Like, you know, because what, because I don't want to pass something without knowing what's in it, you know, I want to know what it says.
Yeah, right now, I don't know what-
Well, the corridor, the corridor plan can be changed at any time, that's what the-
Oh, indeed, and so I, I guess, I was hopeful that we'd have some language, like, if, if your proposal is, is that we take what's happening in segment one in isolation and make it part of the whole plan, I'd want to, I'd want to see that language.
Are you not, are you not happy with what's going on in phase one? Because we all approved phase one already.
I'm happy because it's consistent with the master plan, but you, you want to change the master plan. So I, I'd need to see the language. I appreciate, we, it's a chicken versus egg problem, I guess.
I guess, I'm, I'm trying to understand what you're saying, but-
When we voted on the master plan, we had an entire master plan, we had each segment and we knew what was going to be in each segment. But just because of the way this resolution is written for me, I don't know then what would be in those segments. I, I don't know what they would look like. When I voted on the master plan, I knew exactly what I was voting on because I had pictures of everything. But I don't have anything here that tells me then, the part about aesthetics and enhancements as deemed appropriate by the city council is where my stumbling block is. Because then I don't know when they're going to, you know, then are we going to vote on a bunch of different ones in each segment? How's it going to be?
Well, what do you, what do you think?
We'd have to change the plan now.
I think the master plan's fine the way it is. See, I still believe that the master plan is passed as great, so it's not, you know-
But that, that master plan did not include where every tree and shrub was going to be planted, didn't include the exact shade of the bricks that were going to be going in.
Oh, indeed, but it, but it had more than this.
I, I, I understand, but, but I think what the, what the resolution is trying to portray or convey is that, you know, we, we, all in agreement that aesthetics are, are a valid point to pursue here and that there's, there's an openness to try and make this as attractive and welcoming as, as possible and that we're, we're open to more good ideas on the best way to, to get that done. Now, having said that, when we did take up the master plan, and I made this point before, you know, we were assured that this is just an outline, broad outline of guidance, it's subject to change, we can go back and, and modify it as, as is necessary. You know, it's, it's, it's broad outline. And now I'm, I'm kind of hearing something-
So here's, here's, here's two things I'd tell you, is that we went out for bid in November last year, and so we're almost April, so don't be saying we got nine months to decide this, because you don't have nine months to decide it. And then second of all, I would tell you that the, the plan was drawn by the consultant and we took that plan to Iowa West and said, would you fund the aesthetics? And so at some point, they're going to need to see the redrawn plan so that it can go before their board so that they can decide whether or not to fund the aesthetics, or all those aesthetics are out and we simply have an asphalt road. And so it's not as easy as saying, yeah, we got nine months.
Well, well, if I could answer your question, Al Lee, I, I agree that not every bush and all that, I agree, it is a broad outline and I agree with your, your memory of it, that the plan can be changed. I think if we're going to change the broad outline of the plan, we need to change the language and it would have to be something that would be, we'd change now, because if we leave it as an idea of, if, if we change it from a broad outline that exists now, that I appreciate you may have some concerns with. But if, if we don't use language to replace it with, then, and kick the can on the, my fear is that there will be this, in fact, or an impression that we will kick the can on what those aesthetic improvements would be into the future. And I, I don't think the plan ought to be that amorphous.
Well, my, my thought is if, if we're paying HGM and HDR to eventually come up with plans and specs for phase, phase two, which we awarded last week.
Sure, consistent with the existing plan, yeah.
Right, so if, if we take medians out, when they bring plans and specs-
Yeah.
-they would have alternatives in those plans and specs. Does that make sense?
We're going to do that then for each segment, because here's my fear.
Well, no, we're just taking them up for the whole thing.
Just like with the medians, if you stop to think about, well, but what you just said is that we let the bid to design segment two, so they'll be bringing segment two. And so then at that time, then would, would this council say, okay, then that's how we want it to be the rest of the way? And what I'm trying to find out is are we going to vote for the aesthetics on each segment? And as this council changes, I mean, we'll be five, six years down the road, is the next council going to want a different aesthetic? Are we going to have any consistency? I, I just don't-
That's up to the council, I mean, well, if, if we can't change-
What if somebody doesn't want the, okay, so, we've got right now, this is all because we've got some businesses that aren't happy with medians. That's what's bringing this back forward.
A lot of homeowners as well.
So then if we, well, and I was going to say, everybody's gotten their emails, I've tallied mine from the day after the last council, when you said you wanted to hear from people. And right now, from the ones I've received from that day to today are literally 1515. So it's not like this is a mandate. And I've got them all in different files on the email so I can keep track.
I would love to see some of those, because I, I even asked Melissa and she said, I've gotten a bunch for, and I said, well, I haven't. I said, I've gotten some, for sure.
Did you check, I would just say, make sure you check your spam, because I'm getting a bunch of the ones coming from AOL and from the spam.
And I asked her to forward me a couple of those. And I, I checked, I checked all my folders, I did not receive those.
I will forward them to you right now.
It's, it's classic in politics, it's confirmation bias, people will tend to write to people that they agree with. We all do it, I do it.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not saying that 15 and 15, and that's, that's fine, I'm just, I'm just saying, I didn't receive as many.
I, I put them in separate files as they came in so that I would be able to keep track.
Absolutely, and I, I've, I probably got some that are against, that you guys didn't get, so I'm not-
That's probably true.
I'm not saying that you didn't get the same ones I got.
So, I guess to, to go on with my train of thought there, when I'm looking at the way the resolution is worded, just, you know, the way it's done. So then when we get into segment two, is it going to be, well, somebody doesn't want the brick in front of their building, or they don't want the decorative fencing, or they don't want a tree? You know, is that how we're going to do it all the way down?
So I guess I would agree with what Greg said, if, if the medians are taken out, we would want it to mirror phase one, just like he said, we don't want to draw up new plans. We would want it to be consistent with phase one.
And I think that needs to be in the resolution now, because the plan ought to carry through to the remaining segments, if and until it's changed again. It ought to say it now as opposed to leaving it phase by phase, because then we don't really have a plan if we leave it to every phase.
Deemed appropriate by council.
But I think we could change it to-
That's not a plan.
And we can change it to say that if we're going to remove the medians, we're going to, yeah, toward it to how, Dick, can we do, we can do that, can't we?
Yeah. Perhaps, you know, through this discussion, if we come up with a concept that the majority of you want to include in this versus the-
Just to mirror phase one, we could put that in, okay.
Will we be, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I should say, will we be removing the median from the, the gateway entrance to be consistent?
That's not in phase one, that's not part of phase one.
Well, but it's, 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 it pre-exists phase one, but it, it's, it literally abuts it. So if medians are so bad, it ought to be removed too.
We can, you can bring a resolution to-
When we have to talk to IDOT about that, because-
We own the road. No, we own it now.
We own it.
All, all the way through, through to the river?
I don't know about that, we, we own it.
40th.
We own it to 40th, so it would include that median, yes. So we'd have to, to be consistent, we'd have to remove it.
You could bring a resolution forward to remove that median, absolutely.
I think your resolution may very well do it.
Well, no, because phase one is from 36th East.
Well, but the spirit of your resolution is medians are not good on the street, so we should remove them.
Intentions, it's actual, that's what it is, it's not intentions.
Well, I'm sorry, but again, reading the, the plain language of the resolution says, be it resolved that all medians be eliminated from the plans of the West Broadway corridor master plan and other means of enhancing aesthetic impact of the reconstruction project be explored, designed, or designated and implemented.
Indeed, and isn't, isn't 36th to 40th Street within the West Broadway master plan?
As the, from how I'm reading the plan, that was never the intent of the master plan to redo that portion of the project.
But it would include it.
I, I don't-
It may be unintended consequence, but it would include it.
I think it's a stretch to say that that's a unintended consequence.
Matt, where does, where does construction start, Matt? On 36th there, right in front of Wash Days? Okay.
And I don't think anybody has proposed that we go back and redo things past that point.
But why not? If, if medians are so bad and destroy business and destroy consumer choice.
Because past that point, there's no businesses and you begin to intersect with 480, so you begin to transition traffic onto an interstate highway.
You know, I do wonder, go ahead, Matt, I mean, he's got you up here for questions because I want to call somebody else.
Just wanted to comment on the scope of the master plan. So obviously, the improvements that exist today were contemplated when the master plan was developed. As far as the reconstruction of West Broadway, the intent was always to start at the, the existing median there roughly at 36th.
Right.
So reconstruction was to go east. So as far as the scope of the project that we've intended to do, it never went west, but-
But the original scope included medians in segments two, three, four, and five. So if we're going to talk about changing it, doesn't the, 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 the construction at this time, that started literally today, as, as Roger points out, at 36, it presumed the existence of that which does exist, the, the median? So, and my understanding always was, is the West Broadway master plan, even though it had been as currently passed, and if not changed, will stay the same, included new construction from the end of that median at 36th East. It priests, the, the master plan as a whole, though, included the entrance, including the pillars and that, I mean, it includes that.
Right, we've always talked about the project that we intend to construct is bounded on both sides by good improvements that already exist, that being the gateway features and the viaduct bridge and the artwork that's on there. So we've already got some kind of specialized features on both ends, the intent is to reconstruct in between those and hopefully add aesthetic improvements that tie all that together.
Sure. And 480 starts right after the pillars, in essence, doesn't it?
The new design-
It doesn't include the pillars.
The new design will go to 40th.
But the, 480 is not where the pillars are, right? It's beyond.
Somewhere west of there.
Somewhere, somewhere west of there, yeah.
Nate, let me make sure I'm hearing you right, you're, you're wanting to take a median out?
Well, if the, well, if the plan, I want, I want, I want consistency. If, if, if the goal, if the, if, if medians are so bad for that corridor, then the whole thing ought to be consistent and we ought to remove them all.
And that's why I was going to ask Justin to come up. Justin, could you come forth?
Let me say something real quick, which somebody pointed out to me today. Can you look at the language on the signs? Because it says, "Construction, please consider an alternate route."
Oh, that's not good, that's not good.
For sure, it does.
That's a standard sign, I'm sure.
For the, for the existing businesses within the construction limits, we should look at a different language, is that-
I'm, I'm sure it is standard too.
Okay. I'm sure it's unintentional.
It does say that.
Justin, my question for you is that, I went over the letter again that came from the fire union, and there's no contact information on there. So there was nobody I could write back to, there was no signature on it, so there's nobody I could contact to have this discussion. So I'm going to have it with you and see if you can answer my questions. I guess I'm horrified that firemen would allow all of the medians that are in council bluffs on North 16th Street and the east end of town, all over council bluffs, knowing that it's a hazard to them, knowing that this is such a serious situation, that they would write a letter to the council telling us that we are jeopardizing the safety of the people in the west end if we put these medians in, which are five medians, most of which are not very big. Whereas on the east end of town, Canesville is medians all the way down, we've got medians on Broadway, we've got medians on North 16th Street, we have medians in Haymarket. Can you explain to me why in the world our firefighters, our safety people would not have come to this council years ago to explain this threat that we are under every single day?
Well, I mean, I, just a little context behind how we ended up with a letter from the local, and I obviously don't represent the local, I can talk to you from the-
I would have called that, like I say.
The brass position, which I went to the station and talked to my guys immediately following, watching the council meeting last week. And I said, the only thing I was upset about was Jeff called me the brass. So I'm still a dues-paying member of the union and I knew nothing of this vote. Basically, what happened was a business owner went to the fire station, and you all know firemen very well, they love to help people and they love to have input into their community, and you see that almost monthly by the amount of charity work they do. And so when the, when the business owner approached, he approached one individual, I think that one individual felt like they were obligated at that point to kind of voice an opinion on it. Firemen are typically reactive, obviously, we respond to emergencies from a reactive basis, we're not proactive. I think anyone that says that medians are bad for public safety obviously has not read a single study on medians and curb cuts and traffic flow and walkability. It was, I was frustrated with them, to be honest with you. There was about less than 20 people at the meeting, so of the 100 union members, from what I understand, there was less than 20 people there and apparently at least 11 of them voted to write this letter. I, I kind of go back and I've had this conversation with Matt, that in the past, and I was actually I, I kind of go back and I've had this conversation with Matt that in the past, and I was actually going to address this tonight, but in the past, I can remember a young union leader that in like two thousand four, two thousand five, the previous chief changed the standard operating procedures that said we would stop at every stop sign, every red light. And a young union leader went crazy along with the union and we wrote letters saying, hey, this is going to reduce our response times. It's going to affect our emergency response. And, you know, ten years later, uh, our response times are almost a minute better than the national average. We still stop at every red light, every stop center we're supposed to. And so firemen aren't always the best person to ask when it comes to traffic engineer stuff. They adamantly care about the community. I think, the only reason I tell you that story is because that young union leader was me and Matt was probably on the council when I did it. So I can tell you this, looking back on it, I was wrong. And sometimes we do things out of passion rather than facts. Because when you're a fireman, your entire life revolves around responding to an emergency where you have no facts. You're just showing up, just like the cops. We don't, we really know what we're walking into. And so we just make up those facts and we solve the problem. And so if, if you don't give firemen the actual facts, which I can tell you after having conversations with the people that actually drafted this letter, their facts were completely wrong. They had no idea. They actually mentioned, like, we wish we could take it back, but we're stuck with it now. And so, you know, it's one of those deals. They had a little bit of the facts. Firemen are kitchen table experts. We have solved every world problem at a kitchen table of a fire station. We will continue to do that with no facts basis behind it. And that's just the way they are. And that's the environment they work in. And I think if, if the firemen were truly worried about the medians, you'd see them here in force, like you saw him, uh, less than four weeks ago when it came to collective bargaining. Firemen lining the halls when the collective bargaining bill didn't even affect them. But they knew the facts or a little bit of it, and they knew that it was a problem. They were passionate about it. I don't think they were as passionate about this. I mean, I think after sitting down and talking to them, I actually took these pictures down to them because I kind of felt the, the, the way we were emulating this to them, they'd never seen. And they didn't realize that it was less than twenty percent of Broadway. From what they were hearing was, you know, there's going to be medians, and they didn't ever ask. And so I asked them, do you have a little bit more respect for me than that? And if there's a question, to call and we'll get them the answers. But, you know, sometimes they make decisions on bad facts and sometimes we're wrong, and I'm as guilty of it as anyone. And I've learned through, you know, ten years of being involved, both with the union and with management, that, you know, you need to look at both sides. And sometimes they're not that, uh, they don't react that way. They react fast. Soon as they hear something, they, they create their own facts in their head and then they solve whatever problems in front of them. And I mean, if you want to learn all about government problems, you call the fire station, they'll, they'll answer it. So I don't really have a good answer for you, Sharon, and no one, no one.
So I shouldn't be concerned about the existing ones.
No, you shouldn't. I will, I will go on record saying this will have no impact on our response time, none. And if you look at any study, it shows that it's safer for any time we can alleviate curb cuts and, and separate traffic and, and force people to intersection, to controlled intersections, it's better for the public. And so, but firemen don't look at things from that perspective. They're not on a proactive view. Even law enforcement's probably a little bit more proactive. We're proactive in fire safety, but we're not proactive. They, their whole world revolves around a reaction to something that bad happened. And so when, when you call a fireman, I will concede to them some of their, some of their things. I think there will be a day where we have a traffic accident near a median, hopefully. And it'll be a pain in the butt for them. We'll have to reroute some traffic. We deal with medians all throughout the city. I mean, it's not, this is not going to change our, our, the way we respond to things at all. Firemen are great at adapting. And to be honest with you, by the time we get through this construction project, which is really going to be where some of the detriment and some of the changes in our response are going to happen, uh, the medians will be a small, you know, quirk along the way. I mean, the, the construction phasing and the way we've set this up, it's, it's going to change how we have to respond to things. But those changes aren't always detrimental to response time. I mean, the fact, and, and if anyone thinks that it's a good idea for a thirty-ton fire truck to drive down a center lane or a suicide lane on West Broadway, I will concede that it happens. I would prefer it doesn't. That's why, you know, the reason Chief Byers in two thousand four put out a policy that said, we're going to stop at every stop sign, we're going to control the intersections before we proceed, is because we were killing a lot of firemen, a lot of people throughout the nation with fire. I mean, the, the accidents were killing them. They were rolling fire trucks or they were hitting cars. And so he was pretty proactive and put out a policy that, at the time, I, I thought was dumb. But come to find out, he was a pretty smart guy.
Well, thank you for the information. I guess I would like to also convey that I appreciate that the firemen are reactive. And when I need them, they are reactive and they're wonderful at what they do. I was just quite concerned that there would be so much, you know, to the point with a letter that got published in the newspaper that really, you know, if I were a citizen, I would think, oh, my God, we need to tear all these medians out. Obviously, they're dangerous. So I think it's unfortunate because I think then it got misportrayed to a lot of people to believe that the ones that are existing should be removed because they've got to be dangerous, so they wouldn't have written the letter.
Correct. And if they're truly passionate about it, you'll see them tonight, so.
And, and I appreciate your explanation, Chief, and, and I take you at your word based upon your experience and perspective. At the same time, I, everything that I heard, the, the comments that were made at the last meeting, and I just want to make sure that we are conveying to, to the union rank and file, any first responders, be it fire department, police department, that if they, if they see that there's an item that involves safety implications, both for themselves and the public, that they have every, every right to express those, those opinions and bring them forward. And, and I respect the fact that there's department discipline and that there's, and that there needs to be discipline within how the unions conduct business. But, but at the point that people begin to feel as though that they're reluctant to come forward and speak, and even to put their, their names on a piece of, of correspondence, that is slightly concerning. And I just want to make sure that we are voicing that loud and clear to our first responders.
Yeah, and I, I mean, this letter was drafted by one individual. He actually delivered the note, the letter to me at about the same time he delivered it to all you, to the clerk's office. And so the only difference was my, my letter said, you know, if you have questions, give me a call. And so I called and talked to him. I think maybe he's talked to some of you. It was a firefighter. He, I think, I'm going to go back to the fact that they are very ingrained in the community. And if somebody asks them for help, it's their nature to sometimes react when maybe they don't have all the facts. And so I'll, from this standpoint, though, I think if, I actually had a business owner say to me, you know, I can't believe that the fire chief wouldn't stand with his personnel. And my guys were actually super offended by that because I think they know where both I stand and the mayor and the council. So there's no doubt if I thought there was a problem, that we were going to cause a safety issue for the public, I would be the first one up here. And I think my reputation precedes me to some extent on standing up for my own personnel. So I don't, uh, I don't think they're that concerned with it, but we'll find out tonight, I guess, when they come. And, or if no one shows up, you'll know their, their opinion on it. So any other question?
No, that should do it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Greg or Matt or Terry, I'm not sure who the right one to answer this question is, but obviously, there's a lot of talk, a lot of input. Somebody today, Gary Fisher, said, at the key intersections, is there a possibility for U-turns? Is that, they'd been somewhere that, that had a signal that allowed U-turns during a a certain part of the light cycle? Is that dangerous? Is it feasible?
Uh, first part of the answer is, that is not currently in the, the design or the signal timing. If it was incorporated into the signal phases, you, you could do it safely, but typically, that's not done, given the extents of these medians.
And, and I noticed, I had gotten a question, so I looked up, we have a city ordinance. I'm pretty sure U-turns are allowed in the state. Maybe, I don't know if they have to be signed or it's assumed that you can do it if, if, if it's not otherwise prohibited. But I did notice we had a city ordinance from nineteen seventy-three that prohibits them in the city, I think, completely. I could be misreading it, but I think that's what it says. And somebody said, well, can it, can it be signalized? And I'd looked and I said, well, I, I see it in other places, but it's quite clearly on the sign of where the, what the lanes can permissibly do with the arrows. And I didn't know, you know, maybe that's something, because we do see U-turns. I, I mean, they happen. I, I think quite a few people think frankly they're, they're legal. I, I don't know. Maybe that's something we ought to consider just in general, where, where it can make sense and where it can be safely done. May, maybe we ought to get rid of the flat prohibition on ever doing U-turns just in general, even apart from this issue. Because I, I, if you had asked me before, I, I would have not done it because I think they're, they're unsafe. I, just from my own perspective, I, I don't like U-turns even where they're legal because I've almost been hit a couple of times when I've legally followed it. And other people are trying to turn right on red and don't pay attention, maybe. But I, I do see them enough that I think people do, I, if you'd asked me before, I wouldn't have thought we flat prohibited them everywhere. Honestly, I didn't, I didn't think much of it, but I would have assumed that you probably could do it and it wouldn't have been against the law. I don't know.
Yeah, again, in, in segment one, since we didn't have medians, it really wasn't considered.
Sure.
We do have a signalized intersection, but that's not typical practice for us, so it's not included.
Yeah.
If we were to proceed with the design in segment two with a median, then that could be talked about if, if that's the desire. If, 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 if that's seen as an improvement to the medians and providing additional access potentially.
Kind of like on East Broadway, when you leave Canesville, East Canesville, and you're heading, oh, boy, let's say west, on, on to East Canesville, the, the new, excuse me, on to East Broadway, right in front of the gas station there, where you can now, heading westbound, I guess, kind of, you, you, there's the, we've introduced the yellow.
Flashing yellow.
Flashing yellow, which you see in a lot of places. And I think it's our first in our community. I could, I could be wrong, but it's first I know of anyway, where it seems pretty popular and people seem to intuitively get it as opposed to having to wait.
Right. That's kind of the new standard across the nation. We're implementing it with new changes. The DOT has already done some as well on the highway near Metro Crossing, that area. As they're putting in new signals there, they have the flashing yellow as well.
I, I see them, in my day job, I see them a lot in, in downtown Lincoln. They put them particularly on, and many of their main boulevards are medianed. In fact, many of them are full medians, or much more than twenty percent, even dedicated pedestrian or bicycle lanes, I should say. And they seem to, they seem to cut down on people. The near misses, the intersections I see where those flashing yellow and, and other of those newer ideas aren't. I see more pedestrians near misses and where those are. I know I myself, when I'm driving, I'm far more, when I see the flashing yellow arrow or new things like that, I'm far more likely to look at it because it's novel. And I pay more attention myself. And I, I think I may have cut you off a little bit.
No, just, I, I've seen the U-turn signs you're talking about, but at lighted intersections, I have not seen.
Oh, at lighted intersections, definitely. Not, not, not in uncontrolled. Uncontrolled, that sounds really unsafe. Would you agree?
Yeah, with the, with the number of vehicles on West Broadway outside of a signal, it would definitely be against my recommendation to put them in.
Kind of, kind of like where people now, where I, I don't understand why they think this is legal, where people drive in the center like it's, like it's Dodge. And it's an arrow lane, like, like a commuter lane, if you will.
Right.
I got an email on that today. Somebody said that they just keep seeing people using it as a driveline.
Which is really, really scary, frankly. Because you don't know where they're going to go. Because if they're driving in the middle, in my experience, they're not using their turn signal to signal when they leave it. It's a little scary.
That's, we've talked about this before, that everybody uses that center turn lane a little bit differently. And that's where it tends to lead to conflict. Some people pull into the center turn and way ahead of their turn. Other people do it at the last second. Some people use it as an acceleration lane.
Yeah.
Or emerging lane.
Like you're trying to get on the interstate.
Right. So because people use it differently, that, that does present the opportunity for conflict between two vehicles headed two different directions, and that's where some accidents do occur.
And I've seen it used as a stacking waiting to get into a fast food restaurant where the line is already out to the end, and they just sit in the turn line and wait for it to open up for them.
I, I got a comment actually about that, if, if I may. I, I got a comment from a gentleman online who indicated he drives snowplows. And he, and I hadn't thought of this because his perspective is going to be a lot different than, than mine, is just kind of a person who's driving around. And it's not my, my job to do it. He said that, that the folks driving in the center, it's, it's a tough lane to plow in general anyway because I think he used the word crown, but I took that to mean the roads, the road does appear to have a.
There's cross slope to the road.
He says it's really hard to plow.
Typically, a center turn lane will have cross slope going both directions.
Oh, okay.
So because it's from the middle, it goes each side. And so they don't actually have a crown, so it'll have a point in the middle and it'll go, I mean, it's slight, it's two percent.
Okay.
But.
He said, though, the plow doesn't always get down, so he's concerned that when people do drive in it, which they shouldn't be doing at extended lengths, but that they're not able to really plow it like you can the travel lanes. And so he, he said that it's just unsafe that people think that they should be driving in that as opposed to turning in it. And, and I hadn't really thought about that before because I, I, he would have that perspective that I wouldn't, since that's, that's what he does for a living.
I, I'm confident that our, our crews will figure out a way to effectively plow it. Either way, median, no median, they'll make it happen.
And that's pretty much my conversation with Pat Miller was, either way, they'll make it happen and they'll do a good job because they always do, so.
Originally, could you speak to, there were going to be a good number of trees in the middle, which I still want, and, and were taken out completely. Fine. I, I think there were. Do you, do you remember, and it's unfair question, and I didn't give you advance notice, so very unfair, but do we happen to have any of the slides reasonably handy or to show the things that we took out or the percentage we took out to get down to twen, because originally I thought they were, they were never going to cover a hundred percent. I think it was close, it was over half, though. I want to say it was.
Yeah. I mean, you're right. The, all median locations had trees in them in the first go around.
They certainly did in the, the visual depictions. I remember that. And we took all of them out. Am I right about that?
That's correct.
Okay.
The only place there's trees in the current plan contemplated is a couple of the side streets.
Yeah.
Going north and south in the right of way. And then city-owned property, we made the decision to go ahead and do some private property landscaping essentially. But it's on city property so that it'll beautify that and maybe attract a developer. It can show what the frontage could look like.
Are those trees supposed to be, and I, in my mind, to me, they, they, they're like a transition. They help indicate you're entering into a neighborhood and might block some of the aesthetics of, of a commercial area from where people are trying to live and sleep. Is that part of the reason to have trees in that, what I'll call a transition?
Yeah, and it's, the whole idea of, it's an opportunity to add green, so those green can really, don't fit everywhere, as we know. And, and at those nodes, at those intersections going into neighborhoods is a good opportunity to add green. And so that's why they're, they're kind of concentrated at those locations.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for Matt?
No, thank you.
Anything else on that topic?
Jeff had indicated he'd like to talk, and I, I was just, Jeff's come up and. I don't know what.
Thank you. I just wanted to address the ad about the fire safety. And Mr. James, would you prefer I address you as Chief James? I apologize. I apologize if I offended you. I really like your brother. And I respect what you do for a living. I really do. Thank you for what you guys do. God bless you. Appreciate it. How, my understanding is how it went down with the firemen was, one of the firefighters went to one of the commercial businesses and saw a petition and said, what's this? They looked at it. They had some real concerns and went back to the firehouse on the west side of town. They talked about it, and my understanding was for it to rise to the level to get on a letterhead, there was some real concern. After the last meeting, we circled back and talked to them, and they said there was still some real concern. I get the fact, um, Mr. James, Chief James, that you, that you're not on board with that, and that's certainly your prerogative. And you've been at this a long time. Have you been at twenty years, would you say? Seventeen, okay. I wanted to reach out to somebody maybe that was not involved in our community, a chief from a community similar to ours, that would not have a, a dog in the fight, if you will. So I reached out to a chief dousing from St. Joe, Missouri. And I just asked him, I said, what's been your experience with medians? And he's been a fire chief and a fireman for thirty-eight years. And here's his response, and I'll be happy to make it. And here's his response, and I'll be happy to make it public for the council or for whomever would like it. Jeff, in St. Joseph, and by the way, I looked at their territory, it's about 80,000 people is what they're responsible for total. Jeff, in St. Joseph, as in many other cities with older downtowns, we have several areas where the city has installed medians or curb extensions. Although these are aesthetically pleasing, they really are a hindrance for our fire department. Especially when it comes to turning and setting up our ladder trucks. The curb extensions in downtown areas reduce the size of the streets that are already tight due to early building construction, sidewalks, faults, et cetera. I would definitely have your fire department do some turning tests in the areas if you're even considering contemplating medians or curb extensions prior to construction. Sincerely, Mike Dulcing, Fire Chief, St. Joseph Fire Department. Now granted, he's not from Council Plus, he's not from Omaha, but he's a fire chief with nearly 40 years' experience. And I reached out to him, I, by the way, when I called him, and I'm sure Tim, working the way that he does with an Opelco, will call and ask him about the conversation, I didn't tell him which side that I was on. I said, hey, we got quite a tussle going on with these medians in our community. Of course, you got businesses that are against them, you got some folks that are for them for aesthetic reasons. What's your take as the fire chief? And he told me verbally that. So then I sent him an email, because I wanted it in writing. And I said, Mike, I visited with you last week about meetings, medians, we're having a meeting tonight. I said, if you could share a few sentences about your feelings on medians, based on your years of experience, that would be helpful. Thank you, and thank you for what you do on our behalf and others' behalf on a daily basis, Jeff Ballinger. So, this is somebody that has nearly 40 years' experience in the business and has dealt with medians. I also want you to know that I did talk to the fire chief from Sioux City. He really doesn't have much of an issue with medians. I believe his name was Everett, but I could be wrong. Does that sound right? Yeah. He really didn't feel hot button either way. The only thing he said to me that I thought was really interesting was, I'm surprised a city as progressive as Council Plus is moving towards medians, because we're actually moving away from them. That's the only thing he said about them, but he did not, he was not as adamant as this gentleman was as far as the medians go. One last comment on Dodge Street. Left turns are allowed, according to the Public Works Department, into private residences and private businesses. Were you aware of that, Sharon?
Absolutely aware of that.
Okay, because.
Just not at intersections, although I would say try it. You will get horns laid on, people will flip you off, nobody takes left on Dodge.
You're right, that's right.
It will be ugly.
But what was communicated to me was that things worked fine along Dodge with no left turns, but in reality, you can take left turns on Dodge.
I've always known that you can do it. It's not advised, but you know, you can do it, it's just kind of risky.
So anyway, the reason for the ad and everything else was, we were not, in no way, shape, and form trying to misrepresent anything to the public. This was brought to our attention by some firefighters on the west side of town.
And I would tell you, Jeff, my being upset about that is, is that if there were a majority of firefighters that truly felt that, can you imagine how I would feel knowing that if they were that concerned about the impact of medians on the safety of our residents? Why in the world would they have never come forward to this council and told us that they need to go on? You know, we have North 16th Street, now it's not owned by the state, you need to get those medians out, they're dangerous. The ones on the east end of town, all along Canesville.
Sure.
Why would they not have come to the council and said, this is such a serious concern of ours, that we held a meeting.
Sure.
To vote on it, you know, I don't understand that, it makes me feel.
That's a fair question, I cannot answer a hypothetical. I can tell you that.
I hope and they'll come tonight, so.
Well, I don't believe that they will, what I was told was they were afraid of a little bit of a pushback by communicating their feelings, no disrespect.
So I'll give you a little pushback.
Go for it. You were my banker once, I'm used to it, go ahead.
So, one, I'm offended that you'd get up and say, Mr. James, or our chief, or what do you want me to call you? He is the police chief. I don't know the credentials of the St. Joe's, or the fire chief, I'm sorry.
He is the chief.
He's the fire chief, not the police chief. He's the fire chief, and for you to get up and intimate that he is of lesser quality than the St. Joe fire chief offends me.
I didn't, I didn't.
I would tell you that the fire chief from Sioux City said, this man is a once-in-a-lifetime fire chief. He's done 40 years of interviews.
Who said he wasn't?
You got up and said, Mr. James, or do I call you Chief James, what do you want me to call you? I like your brother, I don't like you, I don't know, I thought that was really offensive.
Well, that's the way that you took it.
Yeah.
I know you're, Matt, listen, I know Mayor Walsh, I know you're under a lot of pressure right now, I wouldn't trade places with you for anything.
I just thought it was offensive, Jeff.
But you need to understand something. When this man said that I offended him by calling him the brass, I wanted to be crystal clear on what he wanted me to, what his title was, how he wanted me to address him. Because I also know him in a social area. He told me how he wanted him addressed. Are you offended? He's fine.
I was, when I, just so you know, I was just joking about being a brass, but I get what Matt's saying, but, you know, and I respect the St. Joe fire chief really has no business on making a statement on medians and curb extensions.
But don't you feel that he's got a right to an opinion? All I'm trying to do is share.
Talking about the same surfaces, though, I mean, it's apples and oranges, is there medians in the 100 block or similar to 100 block? Are they in a corridor that's five lines, basically, in the turnouts? I mean, I just, I don't, I guess.
Jeff, can we receive and file that so we can all get a copy, and then Marcy can give your original back to you? Thanks.
You bet. Sure. Any other questions?
When are we going to get the actual petition? Because it's really hard, we'll go through the studies.
Steve, this evening.
And then we won't have time to look it over if we don't get it till tonight.
Well, we were told, or we felt there was going to be a vote two weeks ago. We were wrong, there wasn't, so we continued to collect petitions.
Is there any way we could get them this afternoon so that if there's time between study session and the meeting, I can look at them?
I'd ask the gentleman from Jimmy John's, he said absolutely not, you'll get it when you get it, and that will be your CNN Town Hall moment.
No, I'll, you know.
If we can get them, Jeff, I'm not going to personally give them any consideration if I haven't had any time to even look at them.
I'll tell you what, my dad, my 79-year-old father, has been collecting them from the businesses on West Broadway. I'll just go back to the office and I'll snag them, I'll make sure that we've got a copy of it, and I'll make sure you guys get them. But let's just have the conversation. This is a community that's on the move. There's no question about it. And this is supposed to be a consensus project. And there's no reason, we're not all going to get what we want, Nate's right about that, but there's no reason we can't work together and get close. I mean, we're out there as business owners, just trying to make a living. You guys are up here just trying to make as many people happy as you can, and that's not easy. But I think we really got to watch our tone with one another, and you got to understand one thing, none of this is personal. You know, we're just trying to make sure that we can make a living, and we want to make sure that we're heard. And we want to make sure that we get a fair hearing, and I understand you're frustrated, we're frustrated too.
You know, and I hope there was no tone, you know, my whole point is, is that I can't consider something that I've never seen and I'm not going to have time to review. There was no aggravation on my part, just that, Jeff, you know, those petitions could have been turned in a long time ago and given me an opportunity to at least look them over, you know, see what some of the comments were, see what they are saying, or what the addresses are.
The online petition's been going since October, actually.
And I've tried to look at that, but it only.
I sent all, I believe all of you got verbatims, did you all?
No, we got nothing.
Yeah, I did.
I got, I got some that had some comments on it, but it didn't print right.
Okay, like I said, I'll run back to the office and get them for you.
They sent a little less than 200 comments, no names, no signatures on a petition. I actually called the gentleman from Jimmy John's and, to give him, I thought sage advice, if you want the council to look at the petitions and consider them, you should give them to them. You promised you'd do it two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, you said we would get them.
And you didn't do it, and his response to me was, we'll give them to you on 3/13, the night of the meeting, and you can have your CNN moment to respond to it. And I said, you know, I'm not trying to pick a fight with you, I'm trying to help your cause. If you've got a petition, people that want to give the petition consideration need to be able to look at it and think about it.
Yeah.
And so we don't know whether there's two signatures or 2,000 signatures.
Well, I can assure you, there's nearly 2,000 signatures.
So why not give them?
Matt, the other thing was, I wanted to make sure that when they went through the petitions, that they were as accurate as possible. In other words, if someone from Crescent is signing, I don't think it's fair to turn that in, so.
And see, that was the thing with the online petition, it was just a name and a comment without an address, so I have no way of knowing. I think there's, I looked right before the meeting, I think maybe was there 879, 879 signatures online?
There's actually 761 after we took the ones out that were not in the immediate Council Plus area.
On the online?
On the, just on the online. One thing that is irrefutable is there's around 2,000 people that do not want medians on West Broadway.
Well, and Jeff, you know, I'm not going to, not to have an argument with you, but I would just tell you, I went on your website, I read what the petition said, and here's the problem. You know, in government, if you were bringing a petition for us to make a change, like a law change, right? And you went out and got signatures, you have to state on the top of the petition, you know, what is the change you're trying to make? Well, when I read your online petition, what it says is, is that they're quite possibly going to lose parking on both sides of Avenue A. It's going to reduce their property values on Avenue A, it's going to increase the traffic on Avenue A. And so some of the emails that I've gotten since the last meeting, that were directly about this issue, some of them were saying, my property value's going to go down on Avenue A, they're going to take my parking away, there's going to be more traffic. And first of all, we're not taking the parking up. Second of all, you know, for me, I think it's unfortunate that that was stated because I can tell you, when I pull property values on Avenue B compared to Avenue A, Avenue B has higher values. So to tell somebody they're going to lose their parking, reduce their property value, and increase their traffic, how? You don't think that that made people sign a petition that had something to do with other than a median?
That's our belief, and the mayor publicly stated that our property values are going to go up because of medians. And I know factually, having owned a business, I know that that's not accurate.
But we've got two issues here.
Alls I did is quote.
You quoted.
The studies that Nick Atherton gave me.
That's fine, I'm telling you from personal experience, having been through the median drill twice, property values do not go up. And I can prove it at 156 in West Center, just look at what my taxes did, they got cut in half. That was the only positive to it, my property taxes got cut in half.
You think that that might be, you know, one of the things we've discussed and is apparent even in the studies, that there are some businesses that are impacted more than others, that's undeniable. The impacts were not hugely, you know, they were like, the ones I saw were like 4%, 2%, 1%. Do you think that maybe with a business like what you've got, because we know they're the ones more impacted, maybe it did cause your property values to go down where maybe a neighbor of yours had their property value go up? Do you think maybe that's where, you know, there's some differences between the increases and decreases in property values would be the type of business?
I think, Sharon, we can have it all, or close to it. I think we can have aesthetics, I think we can decorate the corridor, and I think businesses can still have access. But you're going to have to go a little bit deeper, and you're going to have to work with people to make that happen.
You know, I kind of, personally, I've taken a good bit of time in the last two weeks since the last meeting to go down. I sat in Hy-Vee parking lot through the lunch hour.
Sure.
Watched the traffic manipulations in front of China Walk, China Walk. I would tell you that not a lot of business there right now on that day.
That's unfortunate, that's really unfortunate.
It is, but.
Because they're a taxpaying customer, they're a taxpaying person here.
Exactly, and you want them to be successful, you know, pretty much everything we do when we're talking economic development is with the intent of trying to make the community successful. Now, we don't always agree on what that's going to be, but I think we all agree. We want Council Plus to be successful, we want West Broadway to be successful. But I would tell you that we have no medians now, and Broadway hasn't been successful. I mean, we have already, the city's been responsible for taking down a lot of those buildings. We don't, we haven't seen. My turn.
I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm just saying, but if you throw out a blanket statement like that, you need to quantify it.
Well, I was going to say, what I'm saying is, we haven't seen the per-square-foot values down there go up for sale prices. We haven't seen the assessed values go up, we haven't seen a lot of new businesses coming in. You know, those things that normally quantify a successful corridor, we haven't seen a lot of that. And I would tell you that a lot of the businesses that have complained the loudest, when I go by and I look at those businesses, I ask myself, what have you done to contribute to any type of beautification, any type of making West Broadway look better? You know, people complain terribly about the brick, and I guarantee you, I see it, it fell out, it dissolved, whatever. But what I also see is a lot of money was spent to put in beautification that a lot of the business owners didn't take care of.
Sure.
Wouldn't pull the weeds out of the brick, or spray any weed killer, or sweep the sidewalk off. Not a potted plant, not a piece of green on their property, not a paint job to make it look better. So, you know, you tell yourself, well, obviously, there's going to be a certain amount of businesses that aren't going to do anything to beautify the corridor. We have to do those things as a city in order to make it successful, because the businesses that are there right now, not all of them, but a good many of them, and especially a good many of the ones that have complained the very loudest. This is what I saw when I looked at those businesses, and I think, well, you know, we all have to own it, right? We all have to own it. I will own my vote, my vote will be based on, you know, people, I've gotten emails today. I expect a 5-0 vote, you better represent your constituents, this is what the people want. Well, understand, Jeff, I'm getting just as many emails on the other side, and I have no problem handing you my phone so you can see the ones I've gotten. So who are my constituents? The ones against her, the ones for it? Because I got to tell you, it's right now, dead even, as we've been sitting here, two more came in, one in favor, one opposed. So it's real hard as a council person, you know, to decide, well, what are those mitigating factors? What are those things that are going to make you make some decisions? So that's where you go out and do your research, and that's what I felt like I've done.
Well, can I answer your question?
Yeah.
First of all, do you feel that there'll be a petition tonight presented for 2,000, with nearly 2,000 names in favor of the medians?
No, I feel like there'll be a petition submitted tonight that people signed based on a lot of other things, not just medians. It's going to be based, people on Avenue A may have signed it because they think they're losing their parking or their property values.
If I could finish, but so you don't feel that there'll be 2,000 people that were, who basically said, we don't want medians on West Broadway? I mean, at the end of the day, that's what people are signing, is they don't want medians on West Broadway.
And the petition that's in your stores, or like in the gas station stuff, they say just medians, because that'd be helpful.
Well, my question for you is, will there be a petition tonight submitted? Because you're saying it's 50/50.
If I can fill that one, because I'm the political scientist.
Okay.
Well, I am.
There's no reason.
Oh, that's fine.
I could fill that one. You will never find in any Western system, certainly in the United States, generally speaking, you'll never find people for it who will come out, particularly on lowest levels of government, local government, city and municipal and city, municipal and county-type level. You'll never see the same number of people turn out who are for something as who are against it. It's partly human nature, it's partly the way of, if somebody likes something, they don't complain. We all do it. When I was president of a neighborhood association, very seldom, and I regret this fact now, because I have a different perspective, very seldom, though we did it more than others, very seldom would I write to the five individuals who were up here at this, six individuals, excuse me, who are up here at this time, or at that time, excuse me, and would say I was in favor of something they were doing. But you better believe I would write when I was against it.
Well, Nate, let me jump in there.
That's just the nature, that's the nature of.
People in this community sure turned out for the casinos. The people that were for the casinos sure turned out in a big way, so that kind of contradicts your argument, but let me finish.
Well, if I could finish my answer, I didn't get finished.
I was asked to answer Sharon's question.
I know, but I didn't.
I believe the reason that West Broadway doesn't have a lot of.
If you don't want my answer, then don't ask questions.
Sharon, I want to be respectful to you, Councilwoman White. One of the reasons is because our property tax rate is so high, and you're looking at 20 bucks a foot, triple net. That's one of the reasons people are not leasing space on West Broadway, is because we're not competitive. And some of that's not your fault, I want to be clear on that.
Yeah, and that's, Jeff, I won't argue, you're right, our commercial tax rates and I.
Right, so that's part of the issue we have, and again.
I guarantee you, they're not paying 20 bucks triple net.
Well, if you look at the Block, or if you look down there at Hollywood Video or some of those other places, there's no question that we're not competitively priced compared to other places. My, I guess the biggest thing that I want to share, and I'll be more than happy to sit down, is we agree on 99% of this deal. I mean, to me, I've used the analogy of we're remodeling a home, and we just disagree on the shutters. And it's really, would be a shame if the housing budget gets cut because we disagree on the shutters. That just doesn't make sense to me, nowhere else does that work where it's your way or the highway, on either side, it's not sustainable that way. And I would just like to see as a council, I would like to see from the business community, I would like to see neighbors in this community come together and just try to work together on this, to where, okay, it's a raised, it's a smaller colored brick, stamped brick, that people can at least still get access to our business. Nate's happy because it looks good, we're happy because it improves the property values. Iowa West is happy because aesthetically, it's beautiful, we're all proud to live there, the storm sewers are done. And, you know, gosh, I got, I'm a third generation, I'm a fifth-generation Iowa, third-generation small business owner. I hope my kids want to take over my business, I don't know if they will, but I hope I have something nice to pass along to them, and I want these things done. You know, I wouldn't put this time and energy into it if I didn't think it was important. You know, I wouldn't put this time and energy into it if I didn't think it was important, believe me. So I really believe that we're all really, really on the same page on 90, 95% of this. Um, and it would be a real shame if we just couldn't get together on the last 5% somehow. And I believe that, that you guys have been elected by the constituency to do that, to represent the constituents. So, Councilwoman White, when you say, who do I represent, everybody in this room.
And that's, and that's why I'm trying to explain that it's, it's so difficult, cause when I've got that many emails in favor and that many opposed, and the people that are opposed to it think that I don't listen, and I didn't, you know, I, I didn't represent my constituency. It's, it's, it's a really unfair assumption, if you've never sat up here and you have to understand that just cause you don't have the same emails I do, doesn't mean that you're the only constituents. There are people on the other side that want it too, and so they're gonna say the same thing, well, you didn't vote the way that I wanted you to. And it's not, everybody's been led to believe this is just such a landslide, everybody against it, and that's not what my email's showing, and I can forward all of mine to you. But when you say, you know, why wasn't a petition brought, why, who would've thought they needed to? It passed in October, the meeting last time was so misrepresented as being something, there was no reason for anybody in the public to believe that they had to run out and get petitions to save the medians, cause there was nothing on our agenda about medians. That's why we brought it back to this meeting.
But with all due respect, you said, you said two weeks ago that you wanted those in favor to have two weeks to state their case. That, that's what I remember from the last meeting.
And they have.
And, and if I was sitting up there, I guess my vote would be based on unintended consequences. I would not want to risk the unintended consequence of a business closing, the potential unintended consequence of delayed times for our public safety, folks, and the unintended consequences, uh, to me, it just wouldn't be worth it, as far as the meeting goes, for potential. As a chamber of commerce, or I'm sorry, as a city council, I would never vote for aesthetics over commerce, I just wouldn't.
I just don't, but, but you're making it that, and Jeff.
Actually, I'm not, you, that, that's what the plan is.
No, because I, I don't believe from the facts that I've found that my vote is aesthetics over commerce, because that is not what's indicated. And I know, you know, some of you have said, well, those studies weren't done in Iowa, well, St. Joe's not in Iowa either. You have to go to where the information is and where the studies have been done. I do not believe, Jeff, that it's going to compromise everybody's business down there. I don't believe that that's what's gonna happen.
Fine, and you know what, there's an old saying my grandfather used to say, a man convinced against his will is of the same opinion still. So you, you're never gonna believe that, and that's, and you, and you've got that, that right. But there are two people that believe differently, and one person that's not, that, that is still listening. And alls we're asking is that, that that one person keeps an open mind, because there's an awful lot of folks that feel differently than you.
Well, and, and I'll speak, and it's not a question to you, but just in general, I'll speak to my colleagues.
Mayor Walsh, is it all right, sit down?
Yes, please.
Uh, it's important to remember, and again, I guess you don't have to trust that, we all, we all bring different experiences to the table, and that is my background. But I'll also tell you that in my work, uh, work experiences in my life, I have noticed this, not only living it through the example of being a local effect, elected official, but also my work, uh, working in the Iowa Senate, in the US House of Representatives, and in the British Parliament. I will tell you that everywhere in our system, and our system is an English-based system, literally, the, the country, not the language, you will always find, no matter what the issue is, and I've always found it remarkable, you will find that those against something, and it's human nature, if you think about it, will, will be more inclined to speak out on an issue than those for it. That's just human nature. We all, I think we've all been on the short end of that stick, when we've been for something, and we're trying to push it through, and we're having a really hard time getting people to come. So it's not like I've always been on the side with the, with the numbers of people, I've, I've been on both sides of that. You know, and the other thing is, is representation is important. You have to take, and, and I, and I said this, I remember at one of the forums, I think out at the country club, if I remember the one right, in the, in the last election. You have to take into account, there's, there, there are three ways you can do it when you vote, and I, I think it's important for a civics refresher, and maybe the paper could be helpful in that regard. You can take a raw poll of people, and then the loudest vote, loudest voices who show up and, and be heard. That's how you vote, by, by putting your finger in your mouth and sticking it up in the air, and, and taking the wind, the, the, the poll of the wind, if you will, as to who, who right now is speaking the most. You can do that, but then you could have a trained monkey represent you to do that. You could just do what you think, and take into account the other extreme of the pendulum. You could go completely too far the other way, and just do what you yourself think, as if you are the dictator of the world, and regardless of opinion whatsoever, you could do what you yourself think, everyone else be darned, one way to put it. Or you could do what most people do in our system of government, which is you take into account what people say. You're going to have a lot of people on all sides, people are going to be worked up on all sides, we all are, I, I've been there, and I'll be there again soon enough. But then, when you're up here, for the, the, the limited time that an individual's in, in a role, anything like this, you have to not only take what people say on all sides, but ultimately, it comes down to, you're gonna have a lot of people for something and against it. And ultimately, you have to use your own judgment, based on your own experiences. We've got five very different backgrounds up here that bring different, and, and even those individuals with whom I agree on this, this issue, for example, bring a very valid perspective to this debate that I don't have, uh, and, and I'd like to think I do too. And so, you know, there, there are a lot of people, I, I, I'm not, myself briefly, I'm not a small business owner, and, uh, that's true. I'm not a, a, a multi-generational small business owner either, no, and I'm not even a multi-generational person from this community, that's true too. You know, my, my family were poor farmers, uh, and many of them still are, no offense to them, I, I, it's, I'm very proud to be where I'm from. We, we don't really have that much of stuff, uh, we're not really from Council Bluffs, or from the surrounding area. So, you know, so sometimes, I don't think it's intended that way, but I just want to caution people that when you, when individuals say, I'm, I'm from here five generations, that's not something I can help. That I'm not, or that, you know, you come from a small business background, and your family's been fortunate enough to have that for generations. I'm not. I, my, my family is 325 acres of, of beans and corn north of the city limits. You know, and so I, but I, why do I mention that? Because people whose perspective are different from yours, like my family, and that I worked really hard in education to, to, that my family supported, to be able to, to make something of myself too. Our opinion matters too, and you know, there are a lot of folks who are business owners in other parts of the community, who don't own a business, who work for one, who are barely getting by. That's the majority of our population, and I'm not making fun of it, I'm very proud of them, they're working very hard, for very little, most of them, um, including many of my family. You know, their perspective matters just as much, and so a lot of the folks on all sides ultimately have, have a thought on this. And ultimately then, yeah, the buck does stop with us, we have to take our best judgment on any issue. And most issues, the vast majority of which are not controversial, this one for some reason has become so, uh, wasn't in October. Ultimately, we're gonna all have to make our best decision, and I'm sure each of us will, and each of us will bring our own thought to the table. But in the end, if, if ultimately you, you find that somebody votes differently than you want too often, then you should, you really should. I'm not saying this to be flip, you should vote for somebody else, that's how our system works. But, but ultimately, let's remember that there're differing ish, differing views that get brought to the table, and this, this all or nothing game, in the end, doesn't help anybody. And, and I, I think we all just need to remember that, and just stick to facts, and so I'll be interested to see myself, when, if, if the petition I receive is the same one I've seen online, and yes, I've tried to pay attention to it, like I've tried to pay attention to all the different types of, of input that, that's possible to receive from, from constituents. There are several misstatements, and I'm going to say misstatements, I don't think they were intentional, I have no proof of it, so I'm not going to say they're on purpose. In the end, it doesn't even really matter, because I think they're inaccurate on those. So when people sign them, and there're multiple issues on there, I have to take it with a bit of grain of salt as to how accurate it is, it is, and when people are signing it. And ultimately, in the end, even if nine, 99 out of 100 people came to me and told me that they thought I should vote one way, and only one person said the other, but that other way, looking at the facts, was ultimately what I thought, using my judgment and my conscience was best, I'm going to go with my judgment and my conscience, and then trust the voters to, to understand, or, and if they don't want to keep me if I ran again, which I don't intend to, then that'd be up to them. But, you know, threats either way, all this stuff, this is why so few people want to sit up here, and, and why, you know, I don't want to sit up here forever, I didn't in the beginning, but I certainly don't now, to be very frank, because it just becomes this game, as opposed to just debating the issues and discussing what each of us believes to be right. Let's try to go back to that, and that's all I have to say on that.
Anything else on that item on the agenda?
I would just say, I don't think, I would say the majority, nobody is fighting for, to take out aesthetics, as far as the pedestrian lighting, the decorative paving we saw, the decorative fencing. So the aesthetics, everybody is, I think, is pretty much for. It is strictly just the medians, and I, I just wanted to clarify, a lot of these people are, are for the aesthetic improvements, I just wanna say that. Could I ask you, if you, do, do you recognize that if we change the deal that was agreed last October, which I appreciate you were against at the time, for reasons that I respect? I do. That if we change it, it can't, you can't necessarily reasonably expect that everyone else will agree to keep all the other various pieces the way they are, and change the piece you want changed, and assume that none of the other pieces can change?
Well, if you want to bring, absolutely, you want to bring a resolution forward, I'll take a look without a doubt, if you want to change things.
Well, so, so on this, on this, we could, so on this, oh, thank you. On this, I think as we look at all the various things that could change, uh, I think we have to bear in mind the, the pieces. For example, I'll just be very blunt, my vote is never determined by what a major funder, whether it be Iowa West, whether it be another individual, may want to fund. Because contrary to what people think, and I think you know me well enough to know that I, I vote how I think, right or wrong, and I'm not always right, I know I'm not.
And I think you know me well enough to say the same.
Yes, indeed, indeed, indeed. So I do think it's a factor to consider, when there, it's an element to consider, that if various partners aren't willing to fund something, that ought to be considered. Now, we can, we can agree or disagree whether that's fair or appropriate, that's a legitimate debate. But, but, but reality is reality, I think we gotta look at all those pieces.
Do you think they will?
Do I think they'll continue to fund it if we remove that piece?
I think there's a good chance.
I don't know.
I will say from that.
I won't speak for them.
I will say from that same point, though, the medians are a small part of this project aesthetically even, I mean, there's so much more to it. So I'm hopeful, regardless of how we decide tonight, that just because one part of it gets changed, that they would not pull all the money. I mean, there's still so much that we're being done to beautify outside the medians, I mean, regardless of what your thoughts on the medians, there's still a lot of other stuff that is going into this, you know, it's the stuff along the curbs, it's the lighting, I mean, there's so much more to it, it's the stamped concrete.
Well, and we keep.
Assuming nothing else changes.
We keep talking that it's aesthetics, it's aesthetics, it's aesthetics, it's safety, and, and this was from the West Broadway presentation. West Broadway from 2010 to 2014 had two and a half times the state average of crashes on West Broadway. This is a graph that the police chief provided today at the request. And the, these are the years, 12, 13, 14, 169, 177, 174. There wasn't enough years to do the 2010 to 14, but it does do 12, 13, and 14. The average 173 crashes on West Broadway a year. Look in the last two years, it's gone up to 246, 228, for an average of 237. That's a 37% increase, and I get it, I, I, I'm a finance major, so I understand statistics. Is it, um, is it statistically significant? Who knows at this point, is it a pattern? But I would tell you, if there's a 37% increase over the last two years, that means we are 3.47 times that crash rate of a typical Iowa street with that speed limit and, and a four-lane road. So it, it's not all aesthetics, it's, it's safety.
And to, as a question with safety, it, it's reducing left-hand turns, I think that's a lot of it, correct? Chief Carmany and Chief James? The, the left-hand turns is a lot of those safety issues that we're trying to address. Any cross, right. So my, my position, uh, in a lot of these businesses I've talked to, the, probably, and most of us would probably agree, I would assume, Hy-Vee is the busiest business on West Broadway. And if the safety issue is, is, it is a concern, and I don't want to discount it at all, not, not even a little bit. However, that left-hand turn into Hy-Vee has gotta be the busiest left-hand turn. Hy-Vee has gotta be one of the busiest businesses we have, and there is not a median to reduce that left-hand turn into that business. On 24th Street, there is not a median, so those businesses are saying, well, that is, that's for sure, but they're busier than me. So the safety aspect, that left-hand turn should be blocked off, in, if, if we're talking true left-hand turn reduction.
The left, the left out, though, is blocked off.
Not according to the plans, not on 24th Street, just on that entrance between the bank, yeah.
Mid-block, mid-block.
The entrance between the bank, that small one in the, not on 24th.
Streets, streets, I don't think anywhere, well, that's probably not true either.
17th and 30th are.
Yeah, that's probably not true.
But that, I'm telling you, those businesses have concerns, and Hy-Vee rightfully, they said they wouldn't take a position when I talked to the director. But I, I have to.
Hy-Vee took a position with me. They said they are very much in favor of medians, and that's why they wouldn't speak against them.
Hmm, but there isn't one in front of them, so.
That's a change in position, because when.
And I asked the.
I guess, cause, cause I, I had heard quite the opposite front, at a prior meeting with a Hy-Vee representative, so. I, I, I know corporate positions can change, I understand.
He is a newer guy down there, the guy I talked to, I forget his name, but, but that, again, I, I would say, a lot of these businesses have said, they're busier than we are. They're, they're busier than anybody down there, I would say, so that left-hand turn would, I would assume, would be cut off at that point, for safety aspect. And again, I, I realize the, and when I talked to the gentleman from HDR, uh, he said, and he explained very strategically why the medians are placed where they are. And he had, he had good reasoning, uh, but the, and again, they're placed for a reason where they're at. But the perception, and I know that's not always reality, is Hy-Vee's big business, and they don't have one in front of them, but I do. And so, again, that's, that's perception in the community, from the people I've talked to. But I, when I also talked to that guy, I said, I asked him point blank, can we achieve the same, and back to aesthetics, aesthetic goal on West Broadway without medians, and he said, yes, we could. Now we got back to aesthetics from safety, but.
And I, I really am hesitant to belabor this anymore, really hesitant. But just to clarify something that Mr. Watson said, he, he pointed Mr. Sandow's opposition back when we debated the corridor plan in, uh, last October, and just to clarify, at the point that we discussed that, I, I also expressed my hesitation about the medians. I said that I felt that it was important to keep the planning and keep the overall program on pace, so I was gonna vote for the plan for, for that reason. But I also suggested that if there was, uh, when it, when this subject came up in, in the future, I wanted to see some hard discussion about it, because I thought that Mr. Sandow's points were, had some, had some merit, and, and it needed some discussion. And again, I was assured that this is just providing broad overall guidance, that all this was changeable. And, and last week, uh, recommended motion was, was ruled non-Germane. And so, so Mr. Sandow was instructed that if he wanted to bring a resolution together to, to answer this problem more clearly, that he could do that. And, and here we are. So I, I just wanted to make it clear that, um, he's, he was not alone in his position about the medians last October, and I don't want him to be held up for adverse scrutiny over a misunderstanding.
Anything else on the public hearings? Anything on the resolutions?
Let's see, go ahead if you've got one before.
Sure, I have a number of questions involving the CIP, if I could.
In the, if I may ask, in the interest, considering the time, could we, are there other, are we, would there, may I ask if there are questions on the other issues, so that if individuals don't have something relative to that issue, they could leave? Would that be appropriate?
Yep.
Could, could we, since you indicate you have several questions, is that, thank you. I don't have anything on anything else. Does, does anyone else? Okay. Oh, okay.
No, I just, I've wanted to know on, let's see, it's, we're on the second reading on the rezoning for the subdivision down at Guest Main Gardens. And I just wondered if anybody had a problem. I haven't heard any negative about it. If everything goes well, and I'd like to wave third on it, I haven't had any, anybody say anything that was a problem, so.
I would agree with that. I haven't, I've only heard good things on that.
Yeah.
I haven't, I haven't heard anything negative.
Okay, yeah, let's.
I'll tell you one negative, which is not from the citizens, well, it is from the citizens, but Wallace Street is in very bad shape. As you go past the new church area. And, and we're going to look at that, I've been talking to Pat Miller, and our intent is to.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm having a hard time picturing that.
Well, Wallace is the street that runs from the new East Manawha Drive, or whatever that is. And then if you turn right as you go towards the power plant in front of Assembly Church, that's Wallace.
Oh, okay, I, I wasn't aware of the name, thank you.
And it's been rebuilt there in front of the church, but then it drops down about eight inches, and it's really in bad shape. Pat says it's got a spring underneath it. We're rebuilding those streets down there, but in the East Manawha area. But as we do, we have to continuously move so that we keep the sewer connection connected. And so it's a couple, two or three years, and maybe this, I think maybe they'd have some houses by then. But Pat's going to look at it and try and.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Bad shape.
And then the other one, just as long as we're doing that.
Talking about non-C I P stuff.
I was looking at, we're on second reading on the site development, yard exceptions and permitted intrusions. And again, it's a public hearing tonight, but I haven't had anybody come forward with any questions. So I'd plan to motion to wave third if nobody's here tonight with objections.
I haven't heard anything against that, has anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if anybody else had gotten any feedback.
We might as well move them along.
Okay.
If, as a general rule, if there are no exception, if no one shows up tonight at the public hearing to object to something, it's routine, we should wave third, I would think.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up, because I know other people get phone calls, so I might not have gotten.
Indeed, indeed.
All right, that's it for me.
Anything else? All right, if you don't have.
C I P.
C I P stuff.
Yeah.
Right.
And, uh, let's see, my questions are going to.
Al, let's let them leave if they want to leave.
Well, I, I'm gonna, the questions may impact some of the directors.
All right.
So I just want to, to name the unlucky losers that I might have some questions from. And, and unfortunately, those would be Public Works, Parks, uh, the police chief and the fire chief. Sorry. I'm not seeing a mad dash for the doors at this point, so.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, people, last chance to vote before we start up.
There's an honest guy. Oh, it's, it's not all that long of a list, and we'll try and move through it fairly quickly. I, I, I asked, and Wendy, I think, again, thank you very much for, for all your hard work in responding to me on the, questions not only regarding the budget, but also capital improvement program. And I wanted to return to a question that I had posed to you by email, but I'm not sure that I received a, a response. And that was for the line items, Community Development, or C D eighteen oh three, which carries the, uh, let's see, the, the title, the project title, Rivers Edge Improvement. And then P R twenty dash three, which is a Parks project, which is also framed as, as Rivers Edge Park Phase Three. And, and the response you gave back to me said that those projects weren't associated with Rivers Edge set of projects, and I was.
No, I don't think that was the case.
Did I take that wrong, or?
C D eighteen oh three is, Public Works twenty oh three is not, actually not even on the C I P anymore, it's been removed last year.
Say, say again on twenty oh three?
Twenty oh three was for, I'm sorry. Parks twenty oh three is for the extension of Avenue G, not associated with this project. It's, it's on Larry's wish list for future development potential.
Okay, well, I guess, so, that being said, what is it that we're extending on, on Avenue G?
One time, there was a Parks master plan that included a drive along the riverfront, that, that people would get off on Avenue G and, and go down to the river and be able to take the family in the car to look at the river. You know, that, that fell kind of away to the side after the 2011 flood. In addition to that, there was going to be a treetop walk and natural experience for people in, in the trees. That fell away. But I would tell you that the Heritage Foundation is looking at wanting to do something in that area. And, and intends to spend a couple hundred million dollars, not only just in that area, but on the Omaha side, where the stores pavilion was, along the Lahee Mall, and in, at the ConAgra area. And so we, the area on Council Bluff side that they want to focus on is in that area north of the, of the Bob Carey Pedestrian Bridge. And so we're still looking at that, it's, as Wendy says, kind of a placeholder today. If they come forward and say, they're, I sit on that committee, we're at the point of hiring a consultant. If the consultant were to come in and say, hey, this is, we've seen your plan, we like your plan, in fact, we're, so that we don't get short-shifted in the discussions. We think that it makes sense for us to, to come with our own plan on our side of the river and.
Okay.
And there's still discussions, for example, on the Nebraska side of funding that, there's still discussions, actually, there were a couple today on, on the floor in, in their legislature about various developmental things.
I told you, and I don't know if you saw the email, the interesting thing, that is Heath Mello initiated.
It is.
Legislation that, that the current mayor is opposing because of who initiated it.
It does seem suspicious, doesn't it?
But it's been moved for the time.
So, yeah, it, it's been pushed back, it's out in, into the future, in this year's C I P. You know, we have lots of projects, as you saw in this year's budget, we had to push a couple out. You know, we went back and visited the memo that Dan sent, and his concern wasn't about debt. His concern was about a backlog of projects that need to be completed. And, and, and so we're paying for what we can pay for. The, that one is not going to rise to the top unless we get some money specific to that from the Heritage Foundation or somebody affiliated with them.
Okay, well, I, I just want some more definition, because I was unclear as to what that brief description fully meant. And, and when I saw the, the price tag of five million dollars on that, I, I just wanted to, I wanted a little bit more definition.
Starts adding up.
Thank you for that.
Starts adding up.
It, it does, million here, million there, you're talking real change after a while, so. Not, not quite as expensive, but e- equally as, as curious, at least to me, was C D eighteen oh three, which was described as Rivers Edge improvements. And I was just going back through the, the other resolutions and the other plans that have been approved so far, and the monies that have been expended. And if we're doing additional infrastructure down there, what, what was it that was lacking from the previous plan? This is now going to provide.
Well, I don't have specific details on it, I know this was just for the multiple years of the infrastructure improvements, each year would have different improvements.
Brenda's, maybe you got an answer for it?
Thank you.
Sure. I will do my best, at least. It is my understanding that the project that is listed in here is for, there was a, a year that bonds were failed, that failed to be issued. And I believe that this is helping us play catch-up a little bit in that respect. So as you know, that project was done in several phases. And I think that the two people, unfortunately, that can answer that question the best are no longer employed by the city. So based off of the best that we can find and the information that we have, that is the answer I have for you, Al.
Hmm, well, if, if we have approved plans for, for infrastructure and have allocated some of the funds, and we've taken all the zoning issues, approved the overall plans, I, I guess I'm not sure where, where the bonding issue comes into it. I, I'm more curious as to, on top of the existing plans that we've already made, what is it that we envision this particular project accomplishing?
It's finishing the work that's there already. It's not anything new.
So the existing plans were not adequate to achieve the desired ends, or?
The existing funding that we thought was in place was not actually completely bonded for, from what we understand.
Okay. I guess how, I'm just kind of curious how that works into a separate C I P item, then.
Well, there still needs to be funding for those projects. There still needs to be a line item placed in the C I P to be able to pay the obligations that we already have.
Wow, okay. I'll come back on, on that at a later point in time, so that, that concludes the question pertaining to that particular item. Thank you. My, my other question also pertains to something that I asked before. And that was the anticipated statements, or the anticipated payments that we intend to make for the railroad bridge extension over I twenty-nine. And you gave me a, a response saying that, at, at the time the original C I P was, was done, that, that, that vote had not been taken. But we had, we have taken a vote on that particular project, and, and the C I P was, was modified back on the eighth of March. And it's still not in there. So given the fact that the C I P is intended to align desired capital projects with the funding for those projects, I guess my question remains, how do we anticipate making those $600,000 payments for that project?
Well, one, from one perspective, or my perspective maybe, is that we don't yet have an agreement with the railroad. We don't know what the cost is going to be, we don't know when the payments are going to be due. And so to put it in a, a C I P plan as if it's in stone, at this point, there's a lot of unknowns to, to throw that in there. And, and when we do know, we'll fill in that information.
Well, the staff package for, for that particular project, when it came before us for a vote, said that you anticipated that the first payment was going to be before the close of next year, or early in, in nineteen. So given the fact that the C I P goes out five years into the future, and we're trying to figure out how we're going to have funds for, to pay for things, and, and we're entering into an agreement with, with I dot that commits us to make those payments, I'm just trying to get a handle on where we think that, that the funds are going to be coming from. So that if we make these payments, we're able to meet our other desired ends on, on these other important projects.
And we would do as we do currently. Next year, we'll prioritize what we have to pay, we'll fill in with things that aren't a priority, and, and we'll adjust the C I P accordingly. It's a living document that changes every year, and, and then you come back and say, well, that, this was in this year, not that year, and you did that, and you changed this. It's because it's a very fluid document that, that adjusts accordingly. And so, you know, this was a vote that was taken four weeks ago, and, and frankly, we don't have an agreement with the railroad or, or the D O T, or, and when we get that, we'll have more clarity, more specificity, and we'll fill it in when we do. But until then.
Okay. Next question concerns P D eighteen oh one, which is the, the police headquarters. And, and the, the referendum of voters approved a $20 million bond offering. Looking at, at the C I P, the funds are listed under other, which is appropriate, given the, given the referendum. But it, the, the two funding items here now add up to $25 million, not $20 million. So I was wondering where that other $5 million is coming from. Yeah, there are two entries for $12,500,000 each.
No, one entry should be for 7.5 million. Yeah, and the other one is for 12.5.
Say that again, because too, I, I, I have.
One entry is for seven and a half, the other entry is for 12 and a half.
Okay, so, so this entry's in, in air.
What, what year are you?
If they say 12 and a half.
There are two, there are two similar entries.
There's two on there, I'm guessing there's just one. There's two on, on his copy, I'm guessing there's just one.
Okay, I'm standing here to assure you.
Okay.
12, 5, and 7.
Okay, so we're still locked in at $20 million total.
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Total's up, total's up. It's, frankly, that threw me the first time I saw it, too. Total's up.
Okay. So, uh, next up is, is Fire Station Seven. Was listed in the last C I P that we passed last June. That project cost was noted at, at four million. Now it's listed at eight million, and I was just wondering what, what about that particular project caused that total to double?
Well, I thought we were going to do it over two, and then we talked about going to one. It's really a placeholder, I don't know that, it all depends on a bunch of development and.
That's for the Mid-America Center, isn't it?
Correct.
And that's been in the plans for, I think, as long as you.
Sometime, yeah, actually.
I thought you had four under one year and four under another year at that time.
I think that was our intent originally, we, I mean, you can't build a fire station for $4 million, it's probably going to be eight. I mean, I'm guessing, I, I, we don't, we have not started the process at all. We're putting it out there, saying, hey, we're seeing volume in this area that's going to become detrimental at some point to the average response times and to our responses to that area because of volume. And it's going to start to have an impact long-term on I S O and other things. And we need to start thinking that, one, what's the deployment look like on the west end? And what's that volume going to look like after some redevelopment of the riverfront? And then, um, there's been a lot of thought in our deployment and whether we need two trucks and a station, or we want to start spreading the trucks out a little bit further. But we'll have to see how the development.
Not questioning need at, at all.
Yeah, no, I, I.
So you just combined the years, two years of.
Correct, we basically threw it in there as a placeholder to let Matt and Wendy and city staff know that there's going to be a time when we have to cross this bridge, and we don't know exactly when that's going to be. But if the Mid-American Center continues to thrive, which hopefully it does, and we attract a bunch of more people, and influx of people to that area, we're going to have to serve them, too, and so.
No, yeah, I, I understand. And when I, the reason I'm asking is because when it comes to planning, you know, I'm not a financial analyst, but I do plan stuff, and instead of planning immediate next year, you got to plan way out, see if you can make all your projects connect together with money. And so I just wanted to ask that, because la- in our last C I P, there was just one line item for that item, it was four million, and now it jumped to eight, so.
And I, I think that's probably a more realistic number, but just looking at, from some of the research I've done from around the state of. But just looking at, from some of the research I've done from around the state of departments that have built fire stations in the recent past, it, the good thing about it is it's not going to be a real big station, so, hopefully, we can keep it under that. But we're trying to just put a number roughly. Because we know, obviously, you've seen the CIP and seen the bonding capacity. And so we got to, we got to get on the table somewhere, so.
Okay, thank you. And unfortunately, my, my last question was Dick, is he hiding under his desk? Did he pass out a-
He sometimes has a diabetic reaction and he has to go.
Okay, I, uh, okay, I had a question for, for him, but I guess, um, we can visit that a little bit later on. That, my question for him, and, and y'all might have some perspective, and I don't see this as a showstopper. When the public hearing was held on the, the CIP, it was on a prior draft of the, of the CIP. And so they, they have not acted on the, the current draft. I don't necessarily see that as a, as a showstopper, but I did just want to get, uh, his input on that because things, things have been changing so, so rapidly here financially the past few weeks that I just wanted to, I guess, visit that question with him because that's, does impact what has been looked at in the past. And that's, that's it. And that concludes my list of questions.
Anything else on the CIP?
No.
All right, thank you. See you at 7.